So, welcome Dr. Tahir Akbar, anesthetist from Al-An, a very beautiful place in UAE. And for the first time when I visited Al-An, only then I came to know there are mountains in UAE. Before that, I only used to think that there is sea or desert. So, hand over to all yours, Dr. Tahir Akbar.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Zishan and good evening, rather I will say it is good night. And happy Ramadan to all of you. So, I selected this topic, Pakistani, and I know that there is a learning curve. Right from juniors, medical officers, PGs, seniors, who are beginners in regional anesthesia. Definitely they need some time to learn regional anesthesia, regional techniques. So during that learning time, the learning is in patches. Someone is learning upper limb blocks, they just start doing upper limb blocks. Some they learn tab blocks, tab block is the very basic and easy to learn because patient is already anesthetized. So you have time to do blocks, very common being done in I think all the hospitals. Some people they start from lower limb or some from the trinkle blocks, whatever it is, it's okay to start with. But I feel and it is my own experience as well, that there is some gap in practice because you learn in patches, you may miss some very important components. So I just want to highlight very important component which is safety during regional anesthesia practice. If you don't keep in mind the safety protocol or the safety component, then you may damage the nerve, you may cause local anesthesia toxicity. There are so many things and you may even lose the patient because many of you who are familiar with local anesthesia toxicity. Whatever you do, the CPR or ACLS protocol, you cannot revive the patient if you don't use local anesthesia toxicity protocol which includes interleaved. So if you don't use proper drug, proper resuscitation protocol, you will lose the patient. So please, whatever you do, I know it takes some time, even it may take one year to learn proper regional anesthesia. But not miss the safety features or safety protocols. So, just a minute. Yeah, so what is anesthesiologist? Anesthesiologist, like for example, sometimes surgeons, they think that we just intubate the patient and we sit down. We are relaxing, we are watching social media, we are having some chat chat or we go out for a coffee break. So they just think that endotricle intubation is anesthesia. So all of us, we are anesthesiologists and we know it is not only endotricle intubation. The components of anesthesia are so many very important things like pre-op assessment, knowledge about medication, other medical conditions of the patient, patient optimization, even sometime we have to intervene. Because we think that the pre-op optimization is not being done properly. Patient either needs to be in ICU or it should be managed either by the anesthetist by himself or herself. So then intra-op care, then there is a intra-op complications are there. So how to manage those complications? Then there is post-op care and the pain management. So all these components, they make you a good or safe anesthesiologist. Same is regional anesthesia. So for example, you are able to put a needle on brachial plexus block. So do you think you are an original anesthesiologist? No, it is not. It is same like if you think that doing endotricle intubation is like being an anesthesiologist. So in regional anesthesia, it is not about inserting a needle in a patient or on some structure or near the nerve. Regional anesthesia also includes pre-procedure patient assessment, patient selection, like this patient needs this block. Many a times, we think that this patient doesn't need a block, simple, for example, a soft tissue surgery, soft tissue tumorexian. So after the surgery, a simple local anesthesia infiltration is enough instead of doing the nerve block. So what you need to know, you need to know anatomy. After the knowing anatomy, you need to know sonoran anatomy. So both are little bit different, but you have to master in both these things. Then you need to know about your equipment, how to use ultrasound, how to handle the needle and how to use nerve stimulators. And there are new equipments as well in the market now. So then a local anesthesia pharmacology, then avoid complications, nerve injuries, all these techniques you need to know. Then failed blocks, how to manage the failed block, some rescue blocks or some alternatives like for example, you cannot do a block, so put the patient on PCA or some other analgesic protocols. Then most, most important is the last local anesthesia toxicity. So how to identify it is LA toxicity and what is the management? So all these components are, you know, very important in safe anesthesia. Now, few important components, I will not go into too much detail, but I will just highlight the basics which every one of you need to know. Being with doing this regional anesthesia practice, what basic things you should practice as a habit? Because you know many things in life, we do as a habit, we don't think like, I always do example of regional anesthesia practice with driving. When you sit first time in the car, you are so much scared, you have anxiety. You look at each and everything what you do, then you put on brake, you look at the brake, where is the brake, how to put a foot on it. But when you are expert, you even are listening music, talking to your companion, enjoying the scenery, you are driving, but reflexively you put the brake when it is needed. You turn, you give indicators, all these becomes a habit. So same is regional anesthesia practice, 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 practice and make the good things as your habits. So always you practice those good habits. So first of all, wrong patient, patient identification, how you do it? I think all the hospitals are now following this WHO checklist and guideline, sign in and time out. So even doing this, at many places, most of the time, we do blocks before doing the surgery. There are block rooms outside the operating room. So because sign in and time out is done inside the operating room. So we may miss this very important component when we are doing blocks outside. So make a habit or make it a compulsory component of regional anesthesia practice, doing sign in and time out at your regional anesthesia side in block room or block side. That these following components or a checklist should be followed for sign in and time out for identification of the correct patient. It will be interesting to know that these things are still happening at some places where they don't follow these checklists and guidelines. Wrong patients are being operated at some places. Then wrong side blocks, this is very important topic, I would say, this was the exam question as well. So if you do a wrong side block, how will you manage? So how to avoid wrong side block? This is called a never event, that it should never happen at your institution or in your practice. Some complications are like, for example, if we talk about dural puncture, there is a number. They say like, for example, say five to 10%, there is a known complication, it can happen. But for wrong side blocks, you cannot say right 1% or 0.1% or 0.001%. There is a chance it may happen. It is a never event, it should not happen, there is no place for a wrong side block. So how to avoid this complication? Sign in and time out as a routine, it will include the patient identification in the side and site of surgery. More than patient identification, there is an additional component which is called site marking. So in my hospital, in your hospital as well, it is a common practice now, but in my hospital from the holding area, we cannot move the patient from the holding area if there is no site marking. If patient is not site marked by the surgeon, the operating surgeon, then there is a big sign is placed at the bedside of the patient that site marking is needed. So when they do site marking only, then we move the patient to block area or to the operating room. So that you know prevents wrong side block, but even then, even then it is happening. If you Google it, wrong side blocks, still they are happening, there are UK statistics, there are US statistics. These, those countries, they are very advanced in all this medical techniques, medical education and training. But even then it is happening there. Just think about these developing countries where these two, two, two components, these techniques are little bit newer. And the most important, I think and I consider is no accountability. When there is no accountability, then you are doing it again and again and again because you know there is no accountability. So there is no fear, there is no proper guideline following in those places or those countries or whatever you can say. Like for example, in my hospital, there ever, in my seventeen years practice here, there were three incidents. And all three, all, each incident goes up to Saha level. So at the Ministry of Health level, which is discussed again and again in our M and M meetings. And we come up for a conclusion that what we missed and what we should improve. So even the, even of the site marking is done, there is a possibility like, for example, patient has a right-sided lower limb block. So but you decide that this block should be done after GA and surgery in prone position. When the position is changed, there are big, there is a chance that you may misidentify the side. Right side becomes left side when you position the patient in prone position or otherwise. So this, again, there is a possibility, so always check the site marking. Another incident happened, like for example, patient already prepared and grabbed by a resident, junior resident who was a new and they called the senior resident to do the block. He was in a hurry, he was busy somewhere else, he came and he did the block. He didn't double-check the site marking which was missed by the junior resident. So you see, this can happen. So always the person who is putting the needle to the patient, it is his or her responsibility to check all these things, either to be present at the time of checklist or before putting the needle, always check where is the site marking. So this is very important, wrong side blocks, it is sort of criminal in my setup. So no blocks without site marking, this is a law. Then standard monitoring and IV access. Again, we observed some new guys or new learners, new residents, they did blocks and at the end of the block, we found there was no monitor attached. No pulse oximeter, no BP monitoring. And at two incidents, it happened with me even. There was a monitoring, we did everything, but we didn't check the IV access. At the end of the block, we found there is no IV access. So you see how I would say negligence it is. For example, during the procedure, patient gets LA toxicity or some other complication, if you want to give immediate drugs and then you find there is no access, so you may lose the patient. So it should be part of your checklist, patient identification, site marking, monitoring is done, IV access is there and functional. So always check it is functional. For example, chronic patients, vascular patients who have chronic renal failure or other comorbidities. So maybe they have IV line, they come from the ward and IV line is not working. So it should be checked, it should be properly functioning. So you know, all these things are very important in patient safety and for your practice. Then availability of resuscitation equipment and medication. So again, there should be resuscitation equipment and drugs probably at your block site. For example, if you are in operating room, yes, in operating room, we have most of the things available. Or we can get in case of need, there is, there are lot of other employees around, our colleagues around and we have support. So in time of need, we can get it, but at the block site, we may not have enough people around. Usually two or three people, we are doing blocks. So at our practice, we have a block trolley, block trolley contains all the needs, all the drugs for the blocks, airway management, interleaved and all other resuscitation material. Never do a procedure without monitoring and availability of resuscitation facilities. Then comes the drug errors. If you look at the statistics, medication errors in England, you see again, we have very few places where we can, from where we can get data. Two thirty-seven million drug mistakes are made each year. Okay. And then two hundred and fifty-one deaths are occurring annually due to medication errors. This is the third major cause of deaths in United States. Of course, it is not only anesthesia or regional anesthesia, but I am just talking about the overall drug errors. And drug errors, we being healthcare physicians, we are involved in it, pharmacist, physicians, support staff, nursing staff, I mean drugs are related to the medical staff. So the error lies either with prescription, dispensing or giving to the patients. It is very interesting topic, we should talk it separately. And for regional anesthesia. For example, one time in twenty ml syringe, for example, this is ropivacaine, we have ropivacaine, we don't use bupivacaine in Pakistan. Okay, you are using bupivacaine, liver bupivacaine is being used in England. So you prepare in twenty ml syringe and then in other, other twenty ml syringes, there could, could be another drug in twenty ml syringe. Any other drug diluted, usually cephalosolone antibiotic is prepared in twenty ml syringe. So we had drugs all prepared and labeled. But when we started the block, I found a different color, the nurse was about to inject to the nerve. And when checked again, double-checked, I found it was antibiotic. So antibiotic was about to be injected to the nerve, so drug errors can happen. Okay, or for example, twenty ml ropivacaine is already prepared on the trolley. You want to give antibiotic and if you inject twenty ml of ropivacaine or bupivacaine to the patient instead of antibiotic, what will happen? LA toxicity can happen very quickly. So this is my, you know, discovery or invention, you can say. When you prepare local anesthesia toxicity, label the syringe with the, you know, proper label drug. Of course, we should write the concentration, date and time, which is not done here, it is just for the, you know, this purpose. For the presentation, I should have written it, I did not write it. And just put one sticker or tape or a blank sticker at the tip of the, you know, your syringe. So it will prevent, for example, by mistake, if you want to inject, you know, IV. So it will be easier to discover that, oh, this is not antibiotic, this is local anaesthetic. Then mixing two drugs. At many places, I saw people are mixing just for quick action, they are mixing bupivacaine and lidocaine. Yes, it's okay, it can be done. My rule is I try to avoid to mix two drugs, just one drug. Whichever you use, you need short acting, use lidocaine, lidocaine is not being used commonly for the blocks. It has more element, more component of neurotoxicity, so either bupivacaine or bupivacaine. So if you mix two drugs, then you can easily miscalculate the total dose. Okay. So always calculate maximum safe dose of the drugs, whatever you are giving either single or two drugs. But the miscalculation can happen easily if you are using two drugs. Okay, especially in sick, in underweight patients and in children. Sometimes adult patient comes, they are very sick, they are sometimes thirty-five kg or forty kg of weight. So if you give them the normal adult dose of local anaesthetic what you are giving to other patients, it may be a very high dose or toxic dose for them, especially for children. Again, calculate the total safe dose and you can dilute as per needed. Again, this is the dosage chart, everyone of you have it, ropivacaine is bit safer. As cardiac toxicity wise, it is bit safer and the dose is three milligram per kg. Bupivacaine, two milligram per kg, lidocaine is four, without epinephrine, I try to avoid epinephrine in regional blocks. Okay, that, that we can discuss separately. But for example, the total dose of ropivacaine is hundred milligram for the patient. Okay, and you give fifty milligram of ropivacaine and the remaining volume you want to add as lidocaine. So calculate what dose of lidocaine can be given to this patient. Don't mix the drugs blindly, not on the basis of a volume, on basis of the total safe allowable dose. Okay, so this is again very important. Then is the nerve injury, how to avoid nerve injury, again, it needs practice, practice and practice. Then you learn one block or two blocks or you want to practice. So please till you are comfortable with that, with needle handling, with sonoran anatomy, with the needle visualization under ultrasound or you are expert in using nerve stimulators, till that time, try not to do the blocks alone, do blocks under supervision. So it will add to your confidence in the patient's safety. Four safety filters are there to avoid nerve injury. For example, first one is the patient response. If patient is awake, if you touch the nerve, patient will have paresthesia or any needle entry into the nerve or drug injection into the nerve will be very painful and patient will report back to you. So if patient is under anesthesia, under GA or spinal, you will lose this important component. Nerve stimulators, you need to know how to use nerve stimulators. For example, sometimes obese patient, diabetics or patient having multiple surgeries. Then it is sometimes difficult to identify the neural structures. Then you need to use nerve stimulators and you should know how to use them. If you don't use nerve stimulator, you are losing the second component as well. Then the pressure on injection, the recommended is around fifteen PSI, fifteen to twenty, more than that. That means you are in the neural tissue. Fourth one is ultrasound, again, your mass screen ultrasound, sonoran anatomy, needle handling, needle visualization. If you are just seeing the body of the needle and not the tip, you may enter into the nerve, you may enter into the vessel. So it is again unsafe. So just keep in mind all these four safety filters. Like for example, it is many years now I use the last stimulator because now I am very much comfortable. I know my sonoran anatomy capabilities, I know how to handle the needle, I know where is the tip of the needle when I am inserting the needle into the tissue. So when you are comfortable, then you can do whatever you want. Ah, another component, this is an old picture, but I always show to my colleagues, my juniors, my residents that this picture is my, one of my colleague, he was attempting spinal anesthesia to a patient. And after using these many needles and now just imagine how many attempts he might have made. And after that, he called for help, please. In any procedure, even for an IV line, if you think in one or two attempts, you cannot do it, just call for help. If you are doing multiple attempts, unsuccessful attempts, then on many folds, you are doing harm to the patient and harm to your repetition, to your practice as well and your confidence as well, your confidence will shatter. If you, many times you may have failed, if you are unable to do something that you, you, you just feel bad on that day or for many days. So just think about the patient as well. We had many patients who refused spinal anesthesia. Then we, we, we dig down to the reason why this he or she is refusing the spinal and or epidural. They said we had a very bad experience last time. And we had back pain for longer period of time because they had multiple attempts, you know, you are, if, if, if you pick the muscle, yes, muscle will heal in few days, but if you are damaging the ligaments, ligaments will not heal quickly. It take weeks or months or years maybe. So the patient will have painful back or painful limb for longer period of time. So please call for help when you think you are unable to do it, it is not a shame. It is the patient's safety, it is safe practice and it will add to your experience as well. Now this is important picture or short videos. This is again sonoran anatomy, why I am stressing on that one? This is related to intravascular injections. If you don't know sonoran anatomy, if you don't follow the protocols, then you may enter into the vessels, you may inject local anesthesia, like for example, you are doing brachial plexus blocks which are very near to the vein, you enter, inject the drug into the artery at just few milliliters, it's enough to cause the central nervous system toxicity. So this is axillary block, you can see how vascular area it is. This is just two days back, I just took the picture, musculoskeletal nerve, axillary artery, now look at the vasculature. So when you press, use your C artery and when you release the pressure, you see how many veins are there. Okay, vein is here, vein is here, vein is here, vein is here, okay. So like that. Okay, this is again another video. Same axillary brachial plexus block. Now look at this one. Axillary artery, this is the picture usually, this is the picture usually you see when you do axillary block. Okay, you go for musculoskeletal medias, medial nerve radial, you go below this artery and now look at what actually it is. Now look at how vascular this area is. So if you are not taking care, you may enter into any vessel. Now look at how vascular this area is, so if you are not taking care, you may enter into any vessel. Very easily and you will not identify where your needle is. Okay, look at all these three big veins. And little bit more. Look at this one now. Another branch from the artery is just going below this axillary artery. So how vascular area this was, so I just took video of this one. Now, uh I am just showing you these examples because these are practical examples. You may have not noticed because you just concentrate on your plexus. You just see the nerve, like for example, this is supraclavicular area, this is subclavian artery, this is your supraclavicular nerve structures. And then um interscaline block in the same area is done, and look at how vascular it was. Maybe most of you have not seen this kind of uh vascularity. So still supraclav, I am going trying to go to the interscaline area and look at this one now. A big artery is passing above the neural structure. So I will come from this side, right side, I may pass through this artery if I don't recognize it. So please follow these guidelines, it will come with the practice. How much pressure you should put, you should release the pressure, you should increase the pressure uh on the neural structure. Uh just, now you see two difference, these two videos within three days I recorded. This is the neural structure and arteries passing above this plexus, now look at the other video now. Again, this is the plexus. Yeah, that was the same, now this is the plexus, look at this one now. Interscaline. And just, for example, you are not seeing this structure, you will just come and inject here or the needle tip may go down to the vessel. Yeah, so this is Doppler, now look at this plexus and artery is passing just below this plexus. So please scan carefully, in beginning, just try to do pre-scan before putting the needle, just do the scan. And identify the vascular structures. Okay, this was the one. Okay, so what structures this is, most of the time, this is dorsal scapular artery. So this was the very uh good video, so I just took this screenshot. Subclavian artery has three parts, first part is vertebral artery. Then internal thoracic artery, then pyro cerebral trunk, second part is the costoskeletal trunk, and the third part has a dorsal scapular artery. So most of the, most of the time dorsal scapular artery is passing through this supraclavicular area. And there may be um subscapular artery, suprascapular artery also passing near the. Um you know, um interscaline area. So anything, there is, you know, twenty five percent of patients, they have anatomical difference. And most of the time we see each patient's anatomy is little bit different. So exactly we put ultrasound, you know, has made it's very easy to uh recognize, to identify these differences. Okay, uh this is a uh bigger topic, I think we will keep it on for the next session, local anesthesia toxicity. It is very important, each one of you should know. How to identify local anesthesia toxicity, which are signs and symptoms, and what is the treatment? So broadly, I will just briefly tell you. Give an, uh this is from the England A A G B I, their guidelines. You should have this poster at each block area. Uh give an initial intravenous bolus injection of twenty percent of lipid emulsion. One point five ml per kg over one minute, okay, then start intravenous infusion. Uh of the same drug, intralipid, fifteen ml per kg. Again, this is the detail, we will discuss later on, broadly speaking. They say just inject twenty ml lipid emulsion, hundred ml over one minute. So if you need multiple, uh you know, people doing different jobs. In case of any L toxicity or any complication during the procedure, immediately first thing is call for help. I think all of you have done the P L S, important, most important thing is call for help, even it is difficult intubation, call for help. L toxicity, call for help, uh you need many people um uh taking care, you have to take care of. Airway, intubation, then chest compressions, then someone uh needs a defibrillator as well. And one person will give this stat dose of hundred ml over one minute, it is a big dose which you have injected in one minute. And you know the lipid emulsion is thick and it is bit difficult to withdraw in the bigger syringe and inject in over one minute. Then one liter uh per hour infusion and then you can repeat the dose, two doses. And then you increase the rate to the double, to two liters. Uh do not exceed the maximum cumulative dose of eight forty ml. So again, this is just a brief introduction that you should keep in mind that in case of L toxicity, you have to. Inject lipid emulsion, but you need more people for the help. This is a stop sign, stop sign is there at our e, this block area. Uh before inserting the needle, just stop for a few seconds and immediately before inserting the needle, double check. Uh the procedure side inside uh with patient, if ask the patient as well, if applicable, if patient is awake and. Alert enough, then site marking can consent form. Again, this is W H is safety list. Advice for the beginners and the residents and the, this is my personal advice, I have to. Fight even at my hospital with some my other colleagues, but they, some of them, they don't agree, most of them, they agree, but it is my recommendation. No hands-on teaching and learning on operating table, because you know, two things. One thing is, you are wasting operative time, and next time surgeons will refuse, they will say, it is my patient, I don't need any block. I will manage the pain, so you will, uh you know, damage your regional anesthesia practice. Second thing, so many people around and time restrictions, there is stress and anxiety. During stress, anxiety and during time constraints, you will not learn properly. It is very easy to do mistakes in stressful conditions, so it will, you you will lose your confidence. More chances of mistakes in failure and shaky confidence in these conditions. So I always advise, when you want to learn, just establish a block area outside operating room. Call the patient early, take half an hour, take one hour, do pre-scan, do proper blocks. Uh patient monitoring and everything outside the operating room. It will increase your learning, um you know, learning time will be more, your learning capacity will be more. And you will have a greater confidence in, you know, anatomy, sonar anatomy and all your needling skills. Um this was the whole my lecture, if there is any question, I would be happy to answer. And any questions and comments from your side.
Salaam alaikum, Doctor Tahir, thanks a lot for your.
Welcome sir.
Very nice lecture, uh there are some questions which are being asked, one of them was actually by Doctor uh Haqbat. About this uh used for, I think, lipofen in in place of intralipid.
Uh yes, it can be used, only thing is propofol, some people ask about propofol, propofol no, it cannot be used in place with this, lipofen it can be used.
Okay, and also another question with reference to subclavian central line uh with the scan.
Yes. Okay, what is the basic question?
Question was like you were showing the scan, so. Uh actually, I think the question is that, that subclavian vein can be cannolized with ultrasound, that's the question, I think.
Yeah, can be done, it can be done, yes, again, it uh again. Uh type of patient, for example, it is very obese patients, then you know the scanning and sonar anatomy will be very difficult, it will not be easy. Okay, so just keep in mind this thing.
Actually, one point I will add that I have done many times and a number of times, what happens? That instead of going towards the heart, it goes towards the brain. I have done many times because I think the passage is easier to go up. So even I learned from Doctor Arif Hassan in Saudi Arabia and actually we encountered a number of times. Uh going, instead going to to towards the heart, it goes up, so then they have to readjust it.
Yeah, that is, I I think that is, has nothing to do with ultrasound, actually, ultrasound technique.
Yes, of course they are in.
The anatomy, yeah, that is the anatomy of subclavian vein. Uh but you know, in ICU, the most safer regarding the infection is the subclavian approach. Uh but again, at the same time, yes, the wrong direction, sometimes they go to the.
Yes, uh actually.
That case.
Yes, and actually I will tell you that most important thing about about, as Doctor Tahir. Uh mentioned that uh some sometime we think that how can we give a block to the opposite side? Till the, and actually I also used to think that how is it possible? Then I myself did it and then I can understand that it's possible, so please, site marking is very important, I myself has done. Block on the wrong side because they usually used to have AV fistula on the right side. Always and sometime that day, they were planning to do something on the left side. And in hurry, I give the block very nicely, the hand was not able to move at all and then we came to know. That they have to do on the left side and they had to cancel the the procedure.
Yes, yes, you see, yeah, you you know, it is the same, it is the same thing, until unless you have encountered a difficulty away. You have not uh encountered a difficult intubation, you think, oh, I am a scientist, I am expert, I never encountered a difficult intubation, so you are overconfident. So same thing is when you encounter a complication, then you realize it, yes, it is a reality, it can happen.
Okay, sir, another another question with reference to like mixing of the medications. So what do you think if, for example, someone wants to give two two medications? Is it better to prepare in the separate syringes or it's it's possible to mix them? What do you, what's your experience? Like if we are giving, we have to give to to fasten up the hasten the effect, we are giving both Bupacain and Lidocaine. So what do you suggest, if you, can we mix it or we should use it separate syringes?
There can be, I mean, it is again um. Uh usually, people, they advise, don't mix two drugs. This is the broad advice, don't mix two drugs, okay? So better not to mix it, but again, there is not a big difference that it is totally contraindicated, can be mixed it. So again, there is no red flag in that one.
Yes, and I think Pardeep wants to ask some question, yes, Pardeep?
Question, sir, highlighted a very uh good uh question that we should have not attempt in multiple attempts. And even in IV, we should attempt one or two attempts, and that is from patient safety point of view. But another question is that, uh if we are attempting spinal, uh I never ever used ultrasound. I only use blind technique which we do, and that, how can we prevent nerve injury? Uh having any experience, sir, Doctor Tahir, that we can prevent any injury, uh nerve injury through blind spinal.
So there is.
Or we come to know, or we come to know that uh any nerve injury has occurred, we have to be careful or anything like that.
I think there is no relation to nerve injury or difficult spinal. Yes, if you go to the paravertebra space, in paravertebra space, there are a lot of nerves, if you are going, uh it is a difficult spinal, you don't identify properly. You are not in a midline or a paramedian, you go to paravertebra space, you can cause nerve injuries, yes. But in the midline, uh there is no, in, yes, anything, anything else?
Yes, sir, we in midline, you said through multiple attempts, there are chances of that nerve injury, uh nerve.
No, 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 no. No, 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 I did not say that. Ligament injury. Yes, yes, I said ligament injuries, you know, there is a.
My point, my point is that we can harm the patient through multiple attempts or by doing multiple attempts, we can harm the patient. If one to two spinal attempts, is there any technique or test? We may come to know, uh ligament injury has occurred there, so that we uh in the future, we uh care about that thing. Ultimate, our goal is the patient's safety.
Yes, like if you are, it is just take, there is a term, respect the tissue. You know, even for example, it is a muscle, but it is a ligament, if you do one puncture. We are using usually the small needles, small board needles, twenty five gauge usually in the most common, some people use twenty seven gauge as well. And with introducer, so one or two breaks will do the minimal injury, either it is a muscle, it is it is ligament or whatever. So if you are putting a needle multiple times to any tissue, definitely there will be a tissue damage. Even you put a needle multiple times in a muscle, it will cause hematoma or muscle damage. Okay, so my point is that multiple attempts will damage ligaments more than the muscle. Which will be a sort of chronic pain, it will develop the chronic pain to the patient.
Okay, sir, thank you, sir, you have highlighted very good points to ligament injury or muscle injury. Uh now take home a point for us is that we should know, not attempt, multiple attempts, one or two attempts we should do. And for next attempt, we should call for help, take home point for us.
Yes, yes, call for help, or I will advise, please, all of you, if you have ultrasound in the hospital or in the department, try to learn ultrasound techniques. Ultrasound has made the life of the patient and the anesthesiologists very easy. Uh very good, great experience for you and for the patient itself. Sometimes very obese patients, you don't feel any landmarks and with ultrasound, with single attempt, you can do spinal or epidural. So try, try to learn either ultrasound or call for help. And regarding IV line, you know, uh people usually they forget the simple anatomy. That all, we have neurovascular bundles. All our nervous system, they runs along arteries or veins, blood vessels. So if you are doing blind multiple attempts. Uh to a vein which is not visible or palpable to you, you may cause the nerve injuries. And it has happened and patients, they developed the chronic pain of the limb. So blind attempts for anything, either it is IV line, either it is a nerve block, either it is spinal or epidural, it can be dangerous.
Okay, sir, thank you, sir.
Welcome, welcome.
This thing, we which you have highlighted, this thing which you have highlighted that multiple attempts we offer, we do. Uh because we uh think that we have to do this thing. We don't take the our failure into, I mean, a most of failure. If we think one thing in mind, that the patient which is sitting in O T table, we should think that we are sitting. I also said to my staff and my colleagues, that treat patient as, as you are to be treated.
Yes, very true, very true, and I will tell you, yeah, I don't know in our, how many hospitals they have, the reporting culture. Any mistake, any mistake, please, please develop a culture of reporting. We report each and everything, um then we collect data, then we sit down and discuss. In that way, you can correct the mistake. If you are not counting on your mistakes, you will never correct it. For example, you just want to preserve that your fake or false self-esteem. Koi aapko yeh na kahenge, jisko yeh kaam nahi aata, to that mistake will remain with you for rest of your life. Lekin agar aap help call kar lenge, to it will help. To improve your techniques, improve your skills, and it will help to be, uh, to make you a safe anesthesiologist. And safety of the patient as well.
Yes, thanks a lot, Doctor Habib Rahman want to ask some question.
Yes, please.
Salaam alaikum.
Waalaikum assalam.
Ah, acha sir, maito doctor, maito student, oynastisja ka semester, start hai, this ka sir. So, this session, sir, thoda baad. Jee, main thoda baad me sir, jaan ki aap please sir, ye slide bhi share karenge aur.
Yeah, Habib, Insha Allah, sorry to interrupt, Habib, actually, if you have a question with reference to this specific topic, you can ask. Other discussion, you are welcome, I will answer all your questions, we will share the recordings. And there I will request Doctor Tahir Akbar to share the, the slides as well.
Okay, okay, sir, I'm asking a question.
Okay, okay, any other question?
Sir, main ra- question yeh hai ki sir, jo ab baad log is tarah hota hai ki jab thoda spinal lagate hai to. Awo gloves wagar use nahi karte to, iski vaja se koi infection wagar ho sakta hai sir.
Bilkun ho sakta hai, it's hundred percent possible, sorry to Habib, it's, it's not possible to give any spinal without gloves, okay? Sorry, we have to, we have, we are short of time, I need to take some more questions, sir, there is a question with reference to I N R. Uh that one, what I N R uh is safe for the, like, for the ultrasound guided blocks? For the.
You know, for the, for any neuraxial anesthesia, it is less than below one point five.
Okay.
So we can do it.
Another question.
No, let me just complete this one. At broadly speaking, the same formula is being applied to the nerve blocks as well. But nerve blocks are of two types, one are superficial, for example, what risk is involved with high I N R? With the spinal or epidural, there is a risk of epidural hematoma. So which you cannot control if it happens, so which is high risk. So that is a red flag above that certain limit, you cannot do it. But for the blocks, you can do, for example, patient is high risk, you cannot give other modes of anesthesia. You think that regionally safe, so then there are two types of blocks, one are superficial, for example, hematoma happens, you just press it. So you can do compression, you can prevent hematoma. Others are deep blocks, for example, paravertebra block, paravertebra block is contraindicated, so don't do that one. Any block which is superficial, where you can put pressure and prevent hematoma, you can do these blocks even with high I N R. There is, I mean, not a defined cut-off limit, but if you are doing a surgery on that patient, you can do the peripheral block, superficial ones.
Yes, sir, another question, sir.
Yes. Pardeep, I'm sorry, let us take the question for others, just hold for a while. Uh there is a question with reference to artificial intelligence in regional anesthesia. Hmm, A I in regional anesthesia.
A I is coming, A I is coming in everything, there are now new ultrasound machines are coming, new regional. Needles are coming with, loaded with artificial intelligence, yes, they are helpful in the learning and the training purpose. But, but, but some, at some point still, because you know, it is a developing field. Few things which are not comfortable at the moment, maybe in future, it will be more easily adjustable or acceptable. Like, for example, for example, there is an artificial intelligence loaded machine which can do endotricle intubation. But I will not allow to any of my patient or to myself that a machine should intubate me. There is no replacement to human, you know, for these procedures. So there are things which identify the nerves, which provide you the needle guidance. Yes, you can do, but still, I think it is still in development phase. Uh who, what comes in future, but yes, they are sometimes helpful in identifying epidural space, in identifying the structures. And they provide you the needle track, which track you should go.
Okay, sir, one, another question is with reference to use of bicarb. Uh it was by Doctor Hakbad Durani with reference to bicarb. And also with reference to use of methylprednisolone uh versus dexamethasone in chronic pain. Like methylprednisolone, trimethasone and dexamethasone, and her, his question was. Is it preservative free?
I think it is a. Uh yes, anything you need to, you, you should be preservative free, but I think this chronic pain. Things and these things are a separate and big subject, I think we'll keep it for next time.
Okay, so actually, I will just add on to this thing that there are two sort of thing, one is preservative free. And one, we, we can just have a detailed look at what preservative it is. So some preservatives are not damaging, this is something which actually some of people I have seen. I know that it is very difficult to look at it, because no manufacturer will recommend it. Uh but actually, there are some people in, in, in our hospital even, there are few people who are using dexamethasone. Uh because they had, they, they claim that the preservative, in that dexamethasone is not doing anything, I'm not sure about it, I did not try. Because then I even read about it, that dexamethasone or Dexpanidimidine, Precidex. If you are not giving even in the, in the local anesthetic mixture, whether it is intrathecal or any other block, even if you are giving I V. There is some prolongation of that fact, so that's why I think it is better not to pop into a, a no-go area. Uh because I V, we can handle in a better way as compared to if we inject something and something happen which we don't know. And sir, another with reference to experience with reference to rupivacaine, what do you think that? The, the level of block which we achieve with rupivacaine is the same like bupacaine? Because this may be a question from pe- from the people who don't use it.
Oh yes, of course, of course, why not? We have only rupivacaine, we do many surgeries on the under block, so you have a surgical block, you have analgesic, analgesic blocks. So you have, we, we have three concentrations, one percent, point seven five and point two, so even you can dilute two point three seven five. Uh with infusions are point two percent, uh we can add opioids to that one as well. So I mean, all the things can be done, but the big advantage of rupivacaine is its cardiac toxicity safety profile. It is much safer than bupivacaine.
Because we will give the more dose will be required for the, the same toxic level. So actually, another, another concept, I just with reference to toxicity, we can have another session, but I will just say a word. That sometimes it's the, it's a toxic levels which are achieved, even not the toxic dose. Because if someone say that two milligram per K G save dose doesn't mean that we can inject two milligram per K G of bupacaine in the, in the I V, okay? So it depends on the vascularity of the structure where we are injecting. And maybe we, we should not touch, if we, we are injecting it at a place where there is high chances of absorption, we should be very careful. Uh in, injecting higher dose, this is the message actually. So because sometimes we forget, we are saying this is safe dose, and another important point to be highlighted. Is that you should not calculate it with the total body weight, it's better to calculate with the lean body weight, I'm not sure about it, what's your opinion about it? Lean body weight, it's better, so don't calculate more than seventy K G for a female and more, not more than hundred K G for a man, this is what we should do. Yes, yes, very true, very true. So some of the questions are almost similar, so I think we are short of time, we can, because people are hungry to ask question from Doctor Tahir Akbar. And we can have hours and hours, but I think it's very late back in Pakistan. So I really thanks all of, all of you who have joined us.
Question, last question.
Yes, yes, please.
Sir, Doctor Tahir, I have been experienced that I have put a spinal to one sixty year, one to sixty K G patient. What is your experience of having spinal to how much K G patient you have in your career? That was a same question from you, how many K G weight patient you have given spinal, and it is successful? At highest.
There, there, there is no cut-off limit, if you can position the patient comfortably, more obese patients, they cannot lie down spine position. But if they can, you can give spinal, no issues, but I have given, it was around, I think, hundred and forty K G around, like that. So, but I don't remember. I don't remember.
So I have a record of mine, I have given anesthesia to one sixty K G patient, it was successful, allah, allah. I am asking another, another experience of two hundred or two fifty, we may, we should attempt for that or not, or we will run away from the O T.
No, again, again, I told you, so much super obese patient. So what kind of surgery is this? For example, our lower limb surgery, you want to give spinal, if you can position the patient properly, yes, you can get. But I would like to do it under only blocks, uh because in those patients, the complication, then it is very difficult. First of all, to do the spinal itself, if you don't have ultrasound, you will be doing blind bricks. Uh then to position the patient, super obese patient, he will not be able to lie spine. You will be, have to keep the patient in semi-sitting position or like that, or you have to give G A and then position whatever you want. So again, it is not a only weight basis decision, so many other things are involved in decision making.
So I will just have a word on this question, of course, as Doctor Tahir mentioned, this is no relation with the weight. Because a number of times, there are stress trunkal opacity and the, there is not that much opacity on the backside, this is at one point. So if we are able to, so the, there, the use of ultrasound will be very helpful. So if you are able to have the distance measured, that how much is the distance, where is the midline? And my, we might need to have the lo- longer needles, okay? So this is the way within which there is like some need, so with the help of ultrasound, we, if we are able to measure the distance. Uh between the skin to the space, and then we have the longer needles, then maybe it is of some help, and we are able to mark where is the midline. How much is the distance from the skin to the space, so maybe we can try, otherwise, as Doctor Tahir mentioned, there is no, like, no cut limit for it. May you, you can face problem even apparently not that much weight patient, we can face the same problem. And maybe we can give to even higher weight, so weight does not have the relation.
Okay, sir, and this, and this, sir, take home point is that, we should learn ultrasound, and definitely, sir, we will learn.
Yes, good, good.
So, so thanks a lot, everybody, Insha Allah, I will share the recording to everyone. And, and if any question is missed, you can just drop onto my WhatsApp and I will get it answered by Doctor Tahir. So thanks, Doctor Tahir, jazakallahumullah, and happy Ramadan.
Insha Allah, thank you very much, and all of you, just suggest any topics regarding acute pain surveys, regional anesthesia, pain management. So we can plan in the near future, uh I don't know.
Can you share your number, WhatsApp number?
Uh yeah, WhatsApp number is there in all, by, all the groups and.
I will share, I will share, I will share, okay, sir, thank you, bye bye, salaam alaikum.